We're gonna call this continued meeting. Order, January eighteenth. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Lydah?
Here.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here. If the clerk will please handle the invocation, Mr. Posey, please.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the blessings of this day. The last few days have reminded us how fortunate we are to have shelter and protection from the cold. We pray now for those who are less fortunate, and we pray for the many volunteers who help provide for those in ye. We ask your blessings upon this nation and its leaders. May the new year bring peace throughout the world, and may each of us grow deeper in our faith that we may be alike to those around us. In your name we pray, amen.
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 Lydah?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to have resolution five-seven-seven-four-dash-one-eight.
I think we're coming, I don't know, we're to include anything. About, we'll take care of that after the report session.
(Inaudible).
Everyone should have received copies of the January third regular meeting and the January eleventh work session. We have a motion.
Do we need to vote on that for me to get by?
Yes, we probably should. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed an aye, and aye, have it. Now. We'll take care of that right after the report session. And I'm ready for a motion on the agenda.
How the move for approval of the minutes without reading?
Second.
A motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed an aye, and aye, have it. We have a proclamation, I don't know that they're here tonight, Alabama Human Trafficking Awareness Month. They're not here, okay, I believe the mayor can handle that. Mr. Mayor, before we recognize. We have winners of the beer to the month.
Our choices, aren't we? I think this is just a great part of our meeting that we have every two or three months. We are able to recognize some of our great employees that have been here for quite a while, and we also have added something during this term where we swear in our new police officers. I think it's just really an outstanding part of our meeting. And tonight, we are blessed again to have a thirty-year-service employee, Rick Norris. Rick, come on up if you would. Rick has his daughter Ellen. Ellen, would you come on as well? What a great park and recreation department that we have. It's recognized all over the state and southeast. Think about all the events that take place that folks like Rick are incredible parts of, and making sure that our games are ready to play, our bills are set up like they need to be, our citizens have a place that they can go and enjoy, wonderful facility and park and recreation where we can exercise, and just a lot of things that happen because of individuals like you. We're so grateful for what you've done for our city for the last thirty years. Hired in as a semi-skilled laborer in nineteen eighty-eight, promoted to gardener in March nineteen eighty-nine, labor supervisor was his next promotion, then a senior recreation leader. You've kind of been all around there, haven't you?
That's right.
And promoted to park maintenance supervisor in ninety-seven, and became a public works manager in nineteen ninety-nine. Just does an outstanding job, and Craig, I know, is very proud of him, and appreciates everything that you do to keep our city such a wonderful place it is. Thank you so much for your service.
Would somebody be unhappy with the Valamos getting the fields and they're not the greatest?
And our next employee that we want to recognize, Kelsey Walters with the library. Kelsey, why don't you come up? Her husband, Ira, and daughter, Kira, is here with him as well. Can we say enough about our library, and what it means to our community, and really what it means to the entire metropolitan area? And Kelsey has just been a phenomenal person that loves the library, does a great job, appreciates being there, and has a wonderful servant's heart. You know, her library is recognized so often because of folks like you that do such a great job, and take it to heart, and appreciate the job, and also appreciate serving those that come in every day. And we're just very grateful for what you've done for the last twenty years there. Started out part-time in nineteen ninety-eight, promoted to library clerk typist in nineteen ninety-eight, and then full-time administrative assistant. So you kind of know exactly what's going on in the place all the time. Thank you so much for what you've done to make our city great and our library great. We are grateful for you, thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
And Chief, if you would come up.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor of council, always an exciting opportunity to bring our new employees before you, introduce them. We have new employees because we have retirements, and obviously with Galleria, over thirty years old now, last couple of years we've had more retirements than the police department at the history of the city. So we've got some new blood, some really great employees that we've hired that are going to be here in just a second. Two come from a very large department, another one comes from a mid-sized sheriff's department, bringing different types of experience to the city of Hoover. And again, we're very, very, very excited that we continue to attract and able to hire what I really say are some of the best police officers in the state of Alabama. So I'd like to start with Aaron Finney. Aaron, come on down, please. Aaron started in November. He was with Birmingham Police Department for a little over two years, he's graduate of Jeff State. Certainly excited about Aaron joining our city. Next is Jordan Berry. Jordan, come on down. Jordan's a Hoover product, Hoover High School graduate. Went to work with Hoover, with Birmingham Police Department for a little over two years. These guys were friends at Birmingham Academy time. And Jordan comes with us, also a graduate of the University of Alabama, so we'll give him a little roll tide there, appreciate you there. Next is Tara Bates. Tara, please come down. Tara brings some great experience, five and a half years as a police officer. Started out with Gadsden, and the last few years been with the Sheriff's Department in Etowah County, and working task force. And stopped working for Sheriff's Department, getting those drug task forces, doing some really, really, really good, good work. And we're excited about Tara joining us. So again, three new employees, very, very excited to have them. Many years of service, great opportunities here, and we'll square them in now.
I stick your name?
Hi, Jordan.
A police officer from the city of Hoover, Alabama.
Police officer from the city of Hoover, Alabama.
You saw me square it, I will.
He saw me square it.
To the best of my skill, I will.
To the best of my skill, I will.
Thankfully, just started on duty, required.
Thankfully, just started on duty, required.
Execute orders by superior officers.
Execute the orders by superior officers.
In all cases, promote and enforce.
In all cases, promote and enforce.
The criminal laws and constitution of the state of Alabama.
Criminal laws and constitution of the state of Alabama.
The ordinances of the city of Hoover.
Ordnances of the city of Hoover.
The criminal laws and constitution of the United States.
Criminal laws and constitution of the United States.
Avail the rules governing the police department.
And avail the rules governing the police department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, both.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
All right, why don't we go ahead and take care of resolution fifty-seven-seven-four-dash-eighteen? Start with the reading of the resolution.
This resolution urges the Alabama Legislature to further and evaluate Senate Bill one-thirty and House Bill one-hundred and twenty-two to consider them further prior to passing.
Take a motion.
President, move for approval of resolution fifty-seven-seven-four-eighteen?
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments from the council? First, Dr. Middlebrooks, I know you spearheaded this, maybe you would like to speak to what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, I understand there was some movement today, and I asked Mr. Rice to, or the mayor, to educate us.
Yes, so there was public hearing today, and the legislative committee, and the League of Municipalities spoke in opposition, and this is something, this whole issue, we've been talking with our legislative delegation about for the past five or six months. This particular bill is not going in the direction that we would hope. We do have Beth Chapman working on this, she's relating with other municipalities, and that's our position, say, our opposition. Pardon y'all for presenting this resolution going on record. See if we can get this bill stopped.
Mr. President, just to inform the public, what these bills are proposing to do is any businesses, basically online businesses that are not located here in the state of Alabama, can like for that centralized seller's use tax, which gives eight percent for online sales, such as Amazon. What this bill is proposing is if that online business then moves into a brick-and-mortar location here in the state of Alabama, instead of paying local sales taxes, which many of our municipalities are dependent upon, they could elect to still pay the online seller's use tax of eight percent instead of the local taxes. Do I have that correct?
Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. Item clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lydah?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Item number six, resolution fifty-seven-sixty-two-eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution will be effective for fiscal year ending nine-thirty.
President, I move for approval of resolution fifty-seven-sixty-two-eighteen?
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Rice, for the communication manager's position, you had indicated that we put twelve thousand dollars worth of field position revenue. Does that just get us through fiscal year, or would that be an annual cost?
Mr. President, the twelve thousand dollar figure is the difference between step one of the current pay grade twenty vacancy and step one of the proposed pay grade twenty-two vacancy. The actual dollar impact will be determined on what individual is selected. It's important to know that we anticipate a net decrease in expenditure when all is said and done.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed an aye, and the ayes have it. Item seven, resolution fifty-seven-sixty-three-eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution awards Bill number seventeen dash six asset four.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven-sixty-three-eighteen?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed an aye, and the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven-sixty-four-eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution awards Bill number seventeen dash thirty-nine to C.S. Bay construction.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven-sixty-four-eighteen?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council?
This, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Mac, I don't know if this is familiar to you, but we talked at the work session about some protections for that road and the investment, seeing as it would be neighborhood built, being built off that road after we had completed this project and invested the R three million into it. Did you find anything further about the protections with that, as far as if something were to happen with the road, so that we, our investment is protected?
Yes, I was able to talk with engineering about that matter late last week, and we do have a mechanism that we do implement at times where if the projects are staggered, and we have some public improvements that we already have in place, like a street that are going to be potentially impacted by neighborhood or other development coming online, we have in the past looked at the option of getting a bond for any potential damage for that roadway, and I'll lean on engineering to determine if, in this case, we'll meet that. We do have an instrument that we've implemented.
Here he is, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed an aye, and the ayes have it. Item nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreements regarding Hoover Med Complex South Access Road. We're gonna vote, did these two resolutions together, Mrs. Danielson, if we could vote fifty-seven-sixty-five and fifty-seven-sixty-six-eighteen?
Resolution fifty-seven-sixty-five-dash-eighteen authorizes the mayor to execute a construction management agreement with Glassfield and Gorey. Resolution fifty-seven-sixty-six-dash-eighteen authorizes the mayor to execute a construction materials testing and observation services agreement with Goodman, Mills, and April.
President, I move for approval of resolution fifty-seven-sixty-five-eighteen and fifty-seven-sixty-six-eighteen, with the latter being subject to the city attorney's review approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? It seemed like forever ago, but last Thursday, we went into great detail on these subjects, so if the audience has any questions? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed an aye, and the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven-sixty-seven, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a renewable contract with Bay Services of Alabama and LSC Business Assets Center.
President, I would move this resolution fifty-seven-sixty-seven-eighteen to continue to call the chair?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue to the call of the chair. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, we do have a, Sam Dex, supervisor of video here, aye. Sam, would you like to come down and speak to us?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Name is Sam Dollar, general manager for Sam Dex Police Services. I'd like to thank the Honorable Mayor of Cato, city council, and citizens of Hoover. Thank you, it's very proud to be the solid voice of the citizens of Hoover. We work very hard every day, picking up the trash, taking out the stuff, trying to recycle it all away. On any given day, on trash days, we're servicing about thirteen thousand residents. On recycle day, it's pushing twenty-six thousand, twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine residents to be serviced on a everyday basis. Total services in a given month, there's somewhere around three hundred and twenty-four thousand services that we're providing, just for trash and recycling. And through the last few months, we've noticed an uptick as the city has some complaints. Currently, we serve two hundred and fifty-one complaints per year on three hundred and twenty-four thousand services. You know, percentage-wise, that sounds pretty good, but it's not. That's not where the standard is. Traditionally, we're better than that, and we expect to be better. We're very thankful to be here. We've asked that you support the renewal, see anything we can do. We're looking at remediation plans, checking some supervisors around, and we're addressing the concerns that have echoed through the council and through the mayor. Any comment available, forward to answering questions you may have? One of the biggest challenges for us is recycling, and getting the contamination factor. Working with City Executive Allen Rice, we have developed a flyer, some twenty-six thousand of them that will be mailed out within the next seven days to all the residents of Hoover. Just a simple little picture shows what's acceptable, what's not, and talks about what to do when you see somebody picking up a blue cart. Because occasionally, we do pick up blue carts with trash, and the reason is we're contaminated. What happens is contaminated is it ruins the whole recycling event, and that's the last thing we want to do. Typically, on a recycled one, we'll service about three hundred and fifty tons of recycled from the city to the recycling, and we want that to all go to the recycling. Questions would be, I'm happy to answer.
Any additional comments or questions from the council?
Just one quick comment related to contamination on recycling. What monetary value loss do most cities undergo when one contaminates or residents or someone contaminates a truck full of recycled material?
So it kind of depends on what kind of material it is. In this case, what typically has happened over the years with contamination is it's gotten worse. Recycling now charges fifteen dollars a ton for just normal recycling, if it's clean. If it is contaminated, it jumps to fifty dollars per ton if it's only half contaminated. If they deem the whole load contaminated, it's a hundred dollars a ton. That gets very expensive, it's just a cost. They have costs, the way they get there is by processing. And all that labor to process the trash out costs incrementally more than actually recycling. I know a lot of people think recycling is a moneymaker. I'd love to say it is, in today's world with the commodities market, it's just on site now. Currently, we send it, we first, all the cost for the recycling, one hundred percent. So as the rates have went up, we absorb those because that's the degree we made with the city.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I know you've got scheduled three additional future Hoover meetings. Do you think there'd be any value in having this gentleman come and speak before those crowds and let them try to disseminate what is contamination, and give the people some one-on-one time with their representative that might not have otherwise?
Certainly, we can do that. These are primarily, the future Hoover, upcoming ones are primarily for our comprehensive plan, but certainly we can do that, and especially if we don't see improvements after this flyers put out. But I didn't realize the pizza box in there is contaminated.
It is.
Contaminated, being.
I didn't, as a point of reference, you know, just last time.
Same as those ninety dollars each is years ago.
We got started the deal last time, myself and Tommy Daniel, we're at a, I had met this, a park, they're trying to do a recycle, a top project later this year, and we talked to them a lot about recycling, how it gets contaminated, and how we can all help each other and get stuff to recycling instead of winding up in my landfill.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Sam, how many of these companies offer recycling here in the state that you're able to take to?
The whole processing facilities. Unfortunately, in the greater Birmingham area, actually in north central Alabama, there's really only one. And that's one located here in town. There's only one, kind of a monopoly, and by no means do I want to pick on those folks. Those folks are working hard to do their part, and it's unfortunate for them that there is competition. It does have, the next closest one would be in Huntsville, and there is another facility down south, you know, one in Montgomery. Due to contamination, some other outside financial factors, they shut it down.
Is the different facilities, say here in Hoover, for plastics, for example, we can only take plastics one and two, correct?
Yes, sir.
Depending upon the facilities, like one and a half for the Montgomery, do they offer further, like one through seven?
Not at this time, we actually reached out to them.
Is the industry standard?
Right now, it is in the area, it's like glass, there are very few places now to take glass. Glass is, should be what you think could be a pretty good product to recycle, but the end use of it is just so far away. The closest place now is Atlanta, Georgia, to take glass. Unfortunately, what drives most of this is the cost. So you think a recycling facility runs about forty, roughly forty to fifty dollars a ton in process. Disposal in the southeastern United States runs about twenty-six bucks. No disrespect to any citizens, even myself, we typically try to choose the lower cost. What happens is it drives the recycling where it's higher because you don't have as much product to supply and demand, all disposal stays low.
Mr. President, very quickly, I think education on recycling is the most important thing. I think the flyer's a great idea. If there's a website we can refer our people to, I don't know about y'all, but we can call them about, I can call them about recycling all the time, and I'd ask them, well, what'd you put in there? And they'd say, oh, did you put plastics one through? Oh, I mean, this is a lot of folks that need to understand this. I would encourage addition of the flyer, website, animated video, whatever you even put, because if it's going to save us money in public perception, but they're just not picking up our recycling, but I would urge you to do full court press on any case you can.
Most definitely, I'm working with Tommy and his group out there, Public Works and Billy's, and we've gotten them the flyer, we can put it up on their website, still the waste-dash Hoover, W S A L dash Hoover website, it's out there, we're putting it on there. You better make access for you.
Rice, perhaps we could ensure a link goes on our front page of the city website?
Yep, and we have a hanger that we're developing, that should be ready in the next seven days, it's going to be relatively quick. What we're going to do with that is on the carts, we have a driver's program, and there's going to be no comment sections, just a check the box. And in this case, we're recycling, it's in secondhand, which is the reason why it wasn't removed. On the, same thing will happen with the regular trash carts, we experienced sometimes, carts get very heavy. Carts are designed to hang three hundred pounds, while the cart tip on the back of the truck that's supposed to save the, all the employees' backs, ten, two thousand pounds, very easy. So what happens is if you pick up a cart that's heavy, it destroys the cart. Now, there's been so much on a cart, I've got to buy a new one, so we're going to put that on that flag as well. And the same thing with debris, and supervisors that are running the streets are going to have them as well. So they follow up with a blank that comes from Tommy Dan and his group, the West Tracker system. We're going to have the supervisor follow up, and they're going to go up to the door. They're a little more professional than the drivers, they're going to, usually a different line center. And they're going to be able to make a little note of the resident and say, hey, I'm sorry I missed you. Got your cart taken care of, got your mist taken care of. Whatever the issue might be, it's just a way to improve the communication so we know, know more lines. On the bottom of that, that hanger will be office number for Sand Tower, email address. So they can, they can contact us right away and say, oh, sorry, I didn't notice that. What else can we do?
Very good. Now, how's, how's legal pickup on this issue?
We pick up his, on my estimation, according to the numbers, it's probably the best it's ever been. We have, we have averaged less than five complaints on these. We need one more.
Fortunately, we have plenty of time. This contract doesn't mature until September, so we don't need to wait that long, but we can do some finish working on this issue. And I thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Not going to take any from the public at this point because it has been continued. But if you have anything, perhaps you'd like to talk to this gentleman about, hopefully just to ground until the end of the meeting. And we'll try to keep that police officer close to you, to his president. Yes, sir.
We still need to vote on continuation.
Yes, sir, we do. We have a motion and second to move to call the chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Item eleven, resolution fifty-seven sixty-eight eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution makes sense to the city, to the city of U.A. Distribution, so it's easy to get with Alana, probably through the location of lines at the Hoover Med Complex.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven sixty-eight eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven sixty-nine dash eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution accepts all public and, and, and requests for him to be voted by the way for the Lake Cyrus ten sector, a petition.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven sixty-nine eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven seventy dash eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a renewable work response of all instruments with net desk and quarters attached to the construction.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven seventy eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? I don't know if it reads here. There you are. Any comments or questions? Any from the audience? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven seventy-one eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This, this resolution authorizes the mayor or, or, or gets executed to execute a software lease subscription with.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven seventy-one eighteen.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven seventy-two eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This, this resolution authorizes the mayor or gets executed to execute a, a license on subscription agreement for twelve hundred dollars.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven seventy-two.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven seventy-three eighteen, Mrs. Danielson.
This resolution makes a consent on, on, on property of the buyer in the city of Austin.
Move to approve resolution fifty-seven seventy-three eighteen.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Item seventeen is ABC application for Skyline CM Portfolio LLC doing business as a courtyard by Marriott Hoover, eighteen twenty-four Montgomery Highway. This is a change in ownership on a previously approved site.
Mr. President, I'm due to approve the application for Skyline CM Portfolio LLC.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? You have a representative here tonight? Got to reach and say hello. You don't have to come down unless you want to.
No, if you don't give anything for me.
Well, we about to find out. Anything else from the council? Those in favor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it. Congratulations. Item eighteen is a public hearing to consider the request of Richard A. Johnson the second, representing Blackridge Partners LLC for additional use approval for a clubhouse, swimming pool, and other community amenities to be located on Blackridge Cove. Property is owned by Blackridge Partners LLC and is owned in PR one, planned single family, comes from DNC for positive recommendation. See that we have the public hearing, we're supposed to have. That got left off. Well, let's have the public hearing. At one time, Mr. Johnson mentioned maybe you want to put this off until April.
Yes, I am.
Well, let's, I guess, if you give the presentation during the public hearing, anybody has a minute. So you don't want to continue?
This is Thomas, representative of Blackridge Partners. We come to you tonight for an amenity for our Black, New Black Ridge as all of us. This is the southern edge of our new state trace extension. It's approximately a two acre site, interesting positive approval, unanimous approval, this is a plenty of reasons without, without this credit. It, it involves a clubhouse, pool, deck, dock, boardwalk, parking lot, another amenity that can reach out into the lane. Approximately twenty minutes worth of clubhouse. And I don't doubt. Or you show the recycling.
How large is this lake?
Eleven hundred acres.
Hundred acres, against stock?
Yes, sir, it's currently stock, stocking, small business, big business.
Higher, Mr. Green.
Mr. Green's already six thousand lot.
Park have one for the records.
Sir.
Should we have one for the park as well?
I did.
Thank you, sir. It's like a nice design. Do you have anything else you would like to say?
We'd like to build it.
Yeah, I figured that.
So we would respect the request, you consider the condition used on it, this terrible addition to the construction of this office. This is a bit like.
Aye, please. Now, this is a public hearing. Does anybody in the council have any comments or questions? Anybody from the audience? This is a public hearing. Well, since you don't have anything to say, I guess, is this going to be a resolution or an ordinance?
Yeah, I was going to say, so I just, I'm going to approve the condition used.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Once again, any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have one. Richard, I see more and more communities bringing in food trucks regularly. You know, it's a popular item out of Ross Bridge almost every night. And then where the townhomes are being built there in Ross Bridge, the entrance there, the commercial space, y'all have actually included spots for those food trucks. Is there anything like that designed here for this community? Do you anticipate any need for that?
Not as of yet, and the reason for that is this is a, this is a private development, so it's a gated community. And that brings back another level of discussion with the HOI. We have agreed to incorporate that HOI, but there's not enough residents to weigh in yet. So that's, that'll be their determination. The, the site there, from the structure, as well as the land on the rest of the parcel behind the parking, the parking area, not that. Would, would permit that if the residents sold that.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you for knowing this.
Item nineteen is to set public hearings from Monday, February fifth at six o'clock. Consider the following request, which come forward with positive recommendation from January eighth, planning his open meeting. First, we have Nicole Williams, Goodwood Mills, K Wood Inc., requesting condition use approval for the crossings of Hoover. A senior living independent dependent and memory care center to be located at twenty-one seventy-one Parkway Lake Drive on the corner of Montgomery Highway and Parkway Lake Drive. Property is owned by S and K Investments and its own E U D, E I, Land, Light, and Industrial. Item B is Retief Patel, representing A U M Enterprises Inc., requesting condition use approval for retail beer off premises on the retail table wine off premises on the, sold in the convenience store inside the Hampton Inn Suites located at forty-five twenty, Gallery of Boulevard, Suite one forty-four. A M Enterprises is the property owner and the property is owned, it's the land, parcel. Next, we have the payment of the bills, Mr. Lydon.
President, I have reviewed the bills and I would move to be paid and fully presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Just one quick thing, Mr. President, Mr. Westover, can you give a quick update on Highway one fifty, road expansion?
Mr. President, can we go on the bill?
I'm sorry. It's okay, we'll be right with you.
Anything, anything from, anything on the bills? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing aye, the ayes have it.
Mr. Murphy.
As I stated prior.
Would you go, let me get all that, Mr. Westover, when I ask you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Murphy, as you know, that project out there on Highway one fifty, bridge replacement is a state project. I am not aware of any issues that they're having at this point in time, so I would say that they are on schedule. Last I heard, their schedule was to complete by September of twenty eighteen. I'll be happy to try to get an update on that and report back in the next county meeting.
Sir.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Tim, does that include the expansion of Rock Bridge as well, the turn lane?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's included.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President, I have a question about, I've been asked by a lot of residents in the Green Valley area and in some of the, some of the parts of Blue Park closer to Tower Road and out there. There's been some solicitation going on, perceived solicitation, and a lot of doorbell ringing and then people asking to come back. And, and we had that solicitation ordinance, but there was a question on there about the cutoff time. Could you, could you give me the cutoff time for that solicitation ordinance?
About six o'clock. It's sunset at six.
Six P M.
Six P M, all right. And I just wanted to communicate with some of the people that had been asking about it. And it had been A T and T, I think was the number they, they mentioned. And I think it has to do with some fiber channel that's being run up there. Just a lot of people concerned about did their doorbell ringing after dark?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Chief Finley, how many burst pipes we have today?
Three.
Sir?
Three.
Three, that's all? Pretty good. Any comments or questions from the audience? Almost a month and a year, I don't know. All a year. I'll open to a motion to the chairman.
Move to the chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?